And Councilmember Monger is joining us via electronic media. Can you hear us okay, Carl? He's shaking his head yes.
I can, yeah, I have to hit the uh so that there's no background.
Okay, so when you do want to speak, wave maybe also and say something, otherwise we won't know you want to speak.
I'll do.
Yeah.
Some of us see that. So glad that you could join us. So in just a minute, I'll ask everyone to stand and we'll be led in an opening prayer by Pastor Joel Kele, a bar church, and Joel is somewhere out there. There he is, I saw him a while ago. And then after that, remain standing and we'll be led in the pledges to the American flag and then the Texas flag by Councilmember Schaffner. Please stand.
All right, let's pray. Father, I pray a blessing upon our town, upon those that serve it and lead it, all those that love it. Just ask that in a world of wrong, we would look for right, and in a world of hate, we'd be love. This tough time, Father, we would trust you. It's written on our money, Father, it's kind of all around us. You're the one we gotta press into. So pray for divine wisdom upon this gathering and protection and health upon our residents. And we will be done in our lives, Father. And I just ask that we be good neighbors, care about those that maybe are hurting or worried or have a lot of uncertainty at this time, that they could be certain that they could count on us and that you would just bless Trophy Club, Father. It's through Jesus that I ask it. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
You may be seated. Joel, thank you very much for coming tonight. It is time for public comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on any matter of whether or not it's posted on the agenda. The council is not permitted to take action on or discuss any presentations made to the council at this time concerning an item not listed on the agenda. Presentations are to be limited to a matter over which the council has authority. You may speak up to four minutes or a time limit determined by the presiding officer. To speak during this item, you must complete a speaker's form that includes the topics of your statement or submit an email to mayorandcouncil@trophyclub.org. Lady, had we have anybody submit to speak?
No, sir, we don't.
And did you receive any emails?
No, sir.
All right. Anyone in the audience want to speak at this time about any matter? All right, seeing no one wishing to do so, we will then continue. I'm going to remove item number seven from the consent agenda before we get there. Item number seven, because we're gonna have to take some action so that we can meet a deadline on that. And then secondly, lady, do you know if Christian and Alan, Vivian are here? Oh, back there? Okay, good.
I'll be right back.
Okay. And then I'm also gonna remove item number six. So item number six and seven, we're gonna take some action on before we get into the reports. So item number seven is take appropriate action on ordinance 2020-07 authorizing the selling Series 2020 general obligation refunding bonds. Staff report is in your package. Counsel, I would entertain a motion to approve item number seven at this time.
Motion to approve item number seven, second.
All right. It is moved by Bone and seconded by Garassi. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, show your hands. It is unanimous. All right. You can take care of that mic. The second item is item number is item number six, take appropriate action regarding proclamation 2020-06 of the Town Council recognizing August 16 through 22 as Be Kind Week in Trophy Club. And so I do have a proclamation, and so I will read it and then would entertain a motion to approve. Proclamation 2020-06, whereas kindness is defined as a quality of being friendly, generous, and considerate, as well as selfless, compassionate, and merciful. It has been studied that being kind can strengthen relationships and serves a sense of satisfaction in life as it requires courage and strength to be active when you see people in need. And whereas all across the globe, we are living in unprecedented times unlike any that our world has seen as we deal with challenges coming from all directions. And right now, our world needs more kindness and less judgment. And whereas we have been given so much more time at home to get to know ourselves, our spouses, children, grandchildren, and neighbors a little bit better while dealing with COVID-19, we have had time to reflect, think, watch, learn, write, and just talk to one another about how to deal with working from home, going back to work, being extra cautious, scheduling a surgery, preparing for an interview, dealing with a loss of a loved one, the loss of a job, the loss of a business, or talking about the day-to-day events that we've taken for granted. And whereas the Town of Trophy Club recognizes the value of simple acts of kindness and would ask everyone to participate in making our community stand out from all others by changing the future, the past and the present by practicing kindness and recognizing that everyone has a journey. Things always work out best with kindness and knowing that kindness, thoughts, and actions create a better environment. Happiness is found by practicing kindness. And whereas now is the right time to practice kindness and be kind even when it's not convenient, popular, or in your favor. And also try a little kindness, as Glenn Campbell once wrote and sang. And whereas, as kindness brings peace for today and tomorrow, it also turns what we have into enough and more, and it is rewarding. Whereas, say a kind word, open a door for someone, help someone carry a load, give honest compliments, send thank you cards, tell someone how special they are to you, help our elderly neighbors with yard work, grocery shopping, and above all, be kind to yourself. There are many opportunities to practice kindness. And I therefore, Nick Sanders, in conjunction with the Town Council of Trophy Club Texas proclaim August 16 through 23 as Be Kind Week in Trophy Club. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve item number six.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Bone and a second by Garassi. All in favor, show your hands. It is unanimous. All right, so at this time, I would like to ask Christian and Vivian, is that, no, I mean Alan, if you would come forward, and I wanted you to say a few words about what you have been doing, about your movement of what you've been doing. Here's the microphone up here, and then I'll present you with this proclamation. So for those of you who do not know, you've probably seen around town faith, hope, love signs. I have one in my yard, and they're the ones that did this and have a Facebook page that is One Trophy Club.
Right.
Right? All right, you can talk now.
Thank you, Mayor Sanders, for recognizing us. Yeah, we can tell you a little story of how it occurred. It was the week before Easter and just after the COVID crisis began. And we decided we'd like to do a little something to lift the general spirits of the community. And we had quite often seen the yard signs up in people's yards proclaiming birthdays and other celebrations for individuals in the homes. And we paid to have a sign put up at the traffic circle near the market, supermarket, that said faith, hope, love, that being a quote from 1 Corinthians, chapter 13. And then also decided to put hashtag One Trophy Club, just as a I think the main motivation was a unifier for the community, and it was very well received. We had a number of people comment on it, and we did a little follow-up too. And that was to go to a local sign shop in Roanoke and talk to the proprietor there who had no business at the time and ask him to make some signs for us. And people were asking for the signs, and we gave them to them at cost. And it had the added benefit of helping this individual with his business that was struggling, and he's now doing quite well. And it was just really heartening for us to see the signs pop up around the community on people's lawns and
And we delivered them all. That was really, that was our big thing with, we knew everybody, nobody could go out anywhere, so we decided we would just deliver them to everyone's porch. So we spent hours delivering over 350 signs to people's ports, sneaking into Hogan's Glen, getting them to your house and to others, and it was just, it's wonderful. We've had, we had people order 10 so that they could place them down their street. And we gave away the first 50, and when we bought the first 50, and then after that, we thought, you know what? We'd love to keep this going, and so like we said, we negotiated a price down to a very minimal amount of like $8. And so we were able to sell quite a few, and some people donated, and so then we were able to give some for free where some people said they didn't have you know, they, it's not that people didn't have the money, but they, we were going by Venmo and doing, to help us keep track. Anyway, it just, it was a wonderful thing, and today to drive down the street and see the signs really, really makes us feel good.
But yeah, it probably blessed us more than anybody because we got a lot of joy doing it.
And our kids were in town, so that was really fun. So we had our kids that live in town, and then we had a couple of our kids from Manhattan that were here staying when they escaped the city, and so we would get as a family, jump in the SUV and go deliver. So it was fun.
Well, on behalf of the Town of Trophy Club, I want to thank you for taking the initiative to do that.
Thank you.
I saw lots of really positive comments, and people made positive comments to me. It helped me personally as I was going through some difficult times.
Thank you.
Not only medically, but with the loss of my son. And so I was really happy to see someone take the initiative and try to bring us together. Just continue, because we are approaching election season.
Yes.
So let's remember, it doesn't matter which side of the fence you might be on an issue, we all should be kind to one another.
Absolutely. Couldn't agree more.
Keep out the signs. Maybe you can get those signs that were at the roundabout, and let's put them back there again for election time.
Wouldn't that be nice?
I may be calling you about that. Thank you for your permission.
Yes.
All right, well, thank you. Let me get this, and we're gonna take a picture also.
Masked or unmasked?
Unmasked, because I'm coming without a mask. Just turn around right here.
Okay.
And I'll stand in the middle. So we'll get a couple of pictures. Hurry up, because I'm holding my breath. Thank you so very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
All right, we will now go back to our normal agenda. And item number one, presentation by Metropore Rotary Club to the Town of Trophy Club and to the Fire Department. And so ladies, if you want to come up, introduce yourself, you can remove your mask if you choose to do so.
Okay.
So that you can, we can hear you better and speak into the microphone, state your name and your address, and then we will have the presentation.
Elizabeth McIlvein, 110 Seminole Drive, Trophy Club.
Mary Mo, Georgia, 2404 Taylor Street, South Lake, Texas. So thank you, Mayor Sanders, and Trophy Club City Council members. I'm president of the Metropore Rotary Charities, and Betty is the president of the Metropore Rotary Club this year. We're here tonight to present a grant award in the amount of $2,000 to Stop the Bleed School Partnership. This grant opportunity was brought to the Metropore Rotary Club by the EMS Division of the Trophy Club Fire Department, and I'm gonna have Betty describe the grant.
As a retired school principal from two states, you can tell a project like this is near and dear to my heart. TCFD applied for a grant to purchase materials for bleeding control stations in Byron Nelson High School. Current legislation requires training programs and protocols to be implemented in the public schools to follow in the event of a traumatic injury. TCFD has developed the training and is partnering with schools and Trophy Club to deliver that training. TCFD is asking for grants to purchase the materials to be used in the training and to additionally initially stop the bleed stations that will be set up at fire extinguishers inside the schools. So what we're doing is setting up some emergency first responder station activity in schools. This effort was not funded at the time of the grant application, and so as a local entity, Metropore Rotary is happy to step up and help supply for an urgent need.
Thank you so much. So you have a check?
I do have a check, yes. Jay, congratulations and thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that very much, Mary and Betty. Thank you for being here. Thank you for your passion. They spoke about it very eloquently.
I'll turn around, hold you in the middle.
I just want to say, this is exactly what she talked about, these stations that are set up in the schools. Unfortunately, in the time we live in right now, the active shooter is what we worry about the most. But there's also a lot of other traumatic injuries that can happen there with industrial arts and different things that we have at the schools, just industrial accidents in themselves. These stations allow people to get there quickly, to be trained, to stop the bleed, for very traumatic bleeding. The speed with which you do that, that's what saves lives. We get there quickly, and we have the equipment to take care of that. But in those situations, to have the knowledge and the ability to pack those wounds, it saves lives. We appreciate this very much. We're very passionate about it. We hope to get back out in schools very quickly. We're prepared to do that. We'll just see how, what, you know, what leads through the future here. We're in a little bit of a difficult time, but we'll get through this. We're gonna come out of the other side better than we were before, so we thank you very much for your support.
Thank you, sir.
So this was a matching fund grant, and you're providing the part that we needed to do the matching fund? Is that what the deal is?
Yes, absolutely.
And what agency is doing the matching, the other side?
The other side on this, it's a grant, a federal grant that we have.
So the federal government?
So the federal government did that on an application that we set forth, and then it was a matching grant, and we were able to get that through. They stepped up and took part of the other half of that, so it's wonderful.
Perfect.
Thank you, Rotary, so much. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Nick's walking back. I'm gonna add that it's been my pleasure to be part of Metropore Rotary for eight years since I moved here. Wonderful group, and thank you guys for your support.
Thank you, Carl. All right. I think Mark left, didn't he?
Yeah, he's gone.
So the item that was him talking about, the refunding, we're not gonna do? Are you gonna talk about it, Steve?
And let me just touch on that.
All right. Item number two, the 2010 general obligation refunding bonds that we are doing tonight. Okay, Steve?
And just real briefly, I mean, that, it's a great story, and Mike is here, but the interest rate, if you see that, is almost hard to believe. And I know we're in a very strong market, but refunding this, this does not extend the debt. It's the same number of years. We're just refinancing, basically, at a lower interest rate, and it's saving our residents and taxpayers about $50,000 a year for the next 10 years, so over half a million dollars. So fantastic. Timing was great. Take advantage of the market that we're in. So just wanted to, that's the highlights. And Mike, if I missed anything? Okay.
Counsel, any questions about that? All right. Hearing none, we've already approved doing that, but we did have a report that we were gonna do, but they had to get a document to Wells Fargo by 8:00 PM. So we were having to just adjust things to make that happen. Item number three, a presentation by Three Vote Fitness Center that has opened in Trophy Club, and we have two representatives here, Angela Daniel and Randy Chapman. If you'd come to the podium, you can remove your mask if you want to talk, or if you can talk loud enough with it, that's fine, whatever you choose to do.
Well, I think I could talk loud enough with it, but I'll remove it anyway, just so you can see my face. My name's Angela, this is Randy. We're both co-owners of Three Vote Fitness. A lot of y'all have maybe seen, driving by on the freeway, the sign in the Trophy Club Town Center, but we're really excited to finally be open. Thank you so much for giving us this opportunity to speak and tell you a little bit about us. But we're very, very happy to be open. So we officially opened July 20th. Just a little brief background on why, and then what we're all about, what we provide, what kind of services we provide, and then also the things that we're doing to keep everybody safe when they come in our doors. I think that that's the biggest hot topic here, especially with gyms, is how are we keeping everybody safe? So Three Vote is a gym with all group classes. So we have three different rooms that focus on three different types of training, so three different group classrooms, which is great because what that allows us to do is provide essentially personal training at a much lower cost to a consumer than you would get if you had to hire a personal trainer. So we're giving you direction when you walk into a gym, which is amazing. One of our rooms is a HIIT room, is focused on building strength. It has free weights, and you will rotate through different stations focusing on lifting, building strength, plyometrics, and conditioning. And essentially, it's a HIIT-style training, which is high-intensity interval training. The next room is our, we call our burn room. It's a tread room. So it has woodway treadmills, woodway FTG treadmills, which are top of the line, the best treadmills that you can find. The best thing about them is they decrease impact on your joints by over 30%. Coming from somebody that has had three knee surgeries in their lifetime, I'm ready to make sure that these joints are happy. The FTG kind of eliminates that, which is awesome, and it also forces you into proper running mechanics, so it reduces injury that way, too. Another great thing about those treadmills is they are self-propelled, which means you do the work, which I guess you could say it's a blessing and a curse, right? So the treadmill doesn't do the work for you, you actually are gonna be on the treadmill, propelling the treadmill itself, which means you burn more calories. So at the end of the workout, you are more efficient, you burn more calories, and you get better results. So in the tread room, you rotate back and forth from a station on a tread to a station on a floor. You have your own equipment in both stations, so you'll never share equipment there. You spend maximum of five minutes on a tread station at once, so we're not having you strapped to a treadmill dying for 20 minutes. That sounds like torture to me. I'm sure it sounds like torture to most people in this room. So we don't do that, but we rotate back and forth from the tread to the floor, keep you on your toes, different levels of running. So maybe you'll do some speed training, maybe you'll do some walking, some slower stuff. And then the last room is our legree room. The legree room is outfitted with the best megaformers that you can get. Now, megaformers are a little bit different than a Pilates reformer. So when people see the room, they're like, oh, it's kind of like Pilates, but it is kind of, except for it's more intense and more effective. So we take all the awesome benefits of Pilates, where it was used for rehab and regaining core strength and stability in your joints. So we take that, and then we add it and create a workout out of it, so it's more intense. So essentially, great for training stability, great for training your core, high intensity, but no impact on your joints. So for those of you that are wanting to, that haven't worked out in a long time and are like, I don't know, this all sounds really crazy, a little intense, that's your room. So you start there, no impact, great on your joints, great for core. Back injuries is great for back injuries because it's really focused on strengthening your core. But essentially, all group classes, our group classes are small-sized, so the maximum size of our group classes is 10 people. So we keep it very, very small, just to keep everybody safe. We do have social distancing, so we are running every other station in both of our tread and our HIIT rooms, and our megaformers are spaced so that they're six and a half feet apart, so from center to center. So you have that space and that social distancing. Yeah, so what are we doing to keep everybody safe in the gym? We have a lot of different precautions. The number one thing that stands out is we have something that most other gyms do not have. It's called an airfix unit. What the airfix does is it neutralizes all bacteria and viruses in the air. So essentially, what it's doing is it's pumping and cleaning our air for us, and at the same time, as it releases the fresh air, that air has a substance in it that neutralizes all bacteria and viruses. And it also neutralizes all bacteria and viruses on the surfaces that the air touches. So essentially, we have like, I like to think of it as like scrubbing bubbles, like we have this little scrubbing bubbles guy going around, like scrubbing everything for us. The greatest thing is it is very effective on COVID. So we are keeping everybody clean, constantly having these little invisible guys going around cleaning all of our equipment. On top of that, we require masks when you come into the common areas. You're able to remove the mask once you get to your station in the gym. So all masks will be in all the common areas. Additionally, clean and sanitize everything prior to and post every workout session. So we have an alcohol-based sanitizer, which is shown to be the most effective, that we spray down all our equipment, including our floors. So everything that would be touched is get sprayed by us twice. And we also provide people with their own spray bottle and wipe if they want to spray as well. So we try to keep everybody as clean as humanly possible, understanding that there is no perfect system, but you know, during COVID times, we were delayed a little bit in the production of it, but I think we came up with a really good system to keep everybody safe, and the environment has been so fun, and this community has been so amazing. We've had a great turnout so far, and we just would love to invite everybody to come and join and try it out, and first class is free. So please, please, please come check us out.
First one's free?
First one is free. First one is free. Don't be scared.
Is Counsel gonna show up at 6:00 in the morning? Oh, they are. I didn't see anybody volunteering for that. But you also should know that you can sign up for classes online.
Yes.
And you can see the time slots and who the trainer is in a lot of those cases, so that's nice to know. You can also watch classes and things that have happened in the past to get a better idea of what's happening, because you may not know what legree is, or that kind of thing. Hit, I thought it means I hit somebody, but not exactly.
Sorry to disappoint. You might want to hit us after the class over again.
That's the reason I invited all the councilmen. Also, there's a famous partner. Who's your famous partner?
Yes, okay, so it's myself, Randy. You don't think I'm the famous one?
Yes, you are.
Come on! So myself, Randy, and then DeMarcus Ware is our third partner. So it's been great with him and his support and, you know, really having a passion for fitness. If you guys have followed him post-retirement, just really wanting to make an impact on people's lives and help them find their sense of strength and their health and regain all of the, you know, he's had so many things, so many injuries, being able to help come back from that and help other people come back from any injuries and stuff, so.
And in the front of the gym is a very nice, I shall call it, active wear boutique. Is that fair enough?
Shop, send it to me.
So you can shop there and get the latest styles of what you want to wear.
Yes.
Right?
And women.
Men and women?
Yes.
Yes.
Men and women. And shoes, we have shoes as well.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
No excuse not to be ready to go. Yeah, we're providing everything for you, so.
Okay. All right, well.
Everybody, please come and check us out, so.
I just want to know, do you have the automatic defibrillator?
Fire department is right there.
Right around the corner.
Right around the corner.
Look, I can't depend on them to get there in time. I need one in the building.
He's not here defending himself.
I know. I have to give him a hard time about that. Anyway, well, thank you so much. We're really excited to have you here in Town Center. And wow, it looks like, from what I can see, lots of residents are coming and participating.
Yes.
And you've had a good start. If we can get past social distancing, you can have more people there, right?
But it's been, it's really been an awesome turnout, and the community here has really just taken us in with open arms, which has been great. And I just love the community that we've built so far. We have a lot of, I mean, we had an incredible turnout within the first week, so yeah, just really proud to be a part of it and really grateful for this community. And there's nothing else here. There's nothing else here like that, so it's just a huge need. So especially after being stuck in a house for four months, you know, with the quarantine, people are wanting to get some kind of a social interaction and get their bodies back after the, you know, COVID-15 is what they're calling it, you know? So providing a safe environment to do that is kind of what we're all about.
Thank you so much for coming tonight. We appreciate it, and I'll look forward to seeing you there the next time I'm there.
One quick thing.
Yes, ma'am.
We also have been utilizing our outdoor space that's right in the middle of the Trophy Club Town Center, it's turf as well as grass. So we've gotten a big request for kids' classes, so a lot of kids aren't having PE and just a way to exercise and do a lot of sports. So if you follow us on social media and our website, we'll be rolling out some kids' outdoor classes. We currently do outdoor classes for adults Saturday and Sunday mornings, but we're gonna add the kid flavor into it. It's been a big request, so we'll look out for that.
Well, I'll issue the request for a class for the over 70 group.
Yes, and we're also
We're gonna call it the Platinum Series.
Platinum. Oh, that sounds really nice.
Sundays. We're working on building one of those out.
Okay.
So just follow us. We've got a lot of cool stuff coming, and thank you guys again.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. All right, item number four, a presentation by Anamias Mexican, Tex-Mex, Mexican restaurant that's here in Trophy Club, and we have Bill Robinson with the company here. Bill, if you want to come forward, you're welcome to remove your Bill, if you want to come forward, you're welcome to remove your mask when you talk if you want to.
Thank you. I'm actually Jason Shepherd.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Bill Robinson is the general manager at that location. I'm the director of operations for the company, so he's got to work tonight, so I, I had to come.
Somebody has to work, right?
That's right, that's right. He was a little busy when I left, so I wanted to make sure, uh, make sure we got some representation. Thank you so much for having us. A little bit about us. Jay and Anna Ortiz founded us back in mid-nineties in Capel, Texas. The name is actually Anna Ortiz, and Mia is Jay's oldest daughter, so Anamias is where the name comes from. This is our sixth location. So, we did McKinney a year ago. We've got Trophy Club up now since the twenty-eighth, looking to grow a few more. But as the lady said before, the, the community has been fantastic for us. So excited to have us here, as we are excited to be here. So, we couldn't have asked for a better reception here in Trophy Club. Little bit about us, we finally opened lunch yesterday, so we are actually open regular business hours moving forward. We're going to bring brunch online in about three weeks. So, we'll have Saturday and Sunday brunch, starting at eleven o'clock on the weekends. We have a patio, full bar. This is the biggest bar that we have in any of our locations. And we are too at fifty percent capacity right now, but we do see quite a few people even with that occupancy restriction. So, it's good to see, I've seen some several faces that have already been in to see us. Mr. Mayor, yours as well, so I appreciate that. But yeah, so we are, we're just happy to be here, and thank you so much for having us come out and talk to you.
Well, I appreciate you coming. Also, we'll mention that there is golf cart parking behind the building. So, along with, obviously, people can park anywhere with a golf cart, but there's some special set aside back there.
There are special golf cart parking behind with chargers, and I didn't mention, but we do have online ordering, so you can online order. We'll bring it out to your car for our curbside. So, dine in, online order, takeout, we can take care of you any way you want to get taken care of there.
Well, great. Did you bring the guacamole and chips?
I didn't, but I know where it's at.
Oh, okay.
It's not very, very far from here.
Unfortunately, I'm afraid you may be closed by the time we finish tonight, so. But we'll see. Thank you so much, Jason, for coming. We appreciate you.
Thank you very much.
You being in Trophy Club.
Thank you.
Best of luck to you.
Appreciate it.
And Mayor, just a comment. This is something we're going to attempt to do every council meeting, maybe have one or two businesses, just to highlight our local businesses, give them an opportunity to showcase. And as we all know, all the businesses have been impacted, and really appreciate Wade Carroll for coming up with this idea. I think it, it's great, not only just for Trophy Club Town Center, but for any of our businesses. So, anything we can do to help, we want to do that, so anyway.
I got a call today from a gentleman that just signed his lease at Town Center that is going to be a Neapolitan-type pizza place. So, obviously, they've got to finish it out. But he, he signed the lease and he was really excited about that fact, so he called me to let me know that, so that's good.
We don't mind if they want to bring samples.
It's highly encouraged.
We're not requesting it, but if they want to, it's, we're not.
I think it's, I think it's a great idea.
All right, thank you very much. At this time, we're down to consent agenda. That would be items five and eight and nine. Would someone wish to move consent five, eight, and nine?
Make a motion to approve consent agenda items five, eight, and nine.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilmember Bone, a second by Councilmember Girasi. All in favor, show your hands. That is unanimous. So, I think I got all of the consent agenda with everything that we did. All right, item number ten, take appropriate action regarding the trash and recycling contract with Republic Services. And are you going to start, Steve, with this?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. This is a contract we've had with Republic for, I don't know, approximately fifteen years. This contract did expire in May of 2020, and there's been some, obviously, some things that kind of delayed getting that reviewed and, and brought back to you for consideration. But it's here before you tonight, the direction we received a few months ago was let's keep it pretty much the same level of service, keep it pretty simple. And, and, and we've done that. I would say there's two things that are maybe a little different or enhance service. There is not a reduction in service at, at any level. Two items, one, there is a pilot program for recycling carts, if that's something we want to do. It doesn't obligate us to do it, it's just in there. We get some people that, that want them desperately, and we've got others that say, "Don't even get them near me." So, but, but again, it would be a pilot program. It's not built into the rate structure at all. The other item is our household hazardous waste program is very, very successful. We get inundated on that program, and, and we do it twice a year, two hours at each event. This has been expanded to four hours for each event. Outside of that, it's pretty much the same. We've got, for the last five years, there, there was a requirement, no increase in sanitation costs. And so naturally, you're going to see an increase about a little over two dollars a month on the sanitation. The recycling had an increase of about a dollar twenty that was approved, oh, I don't know, fifteen months or longer ago, that for whatever reason, I don't know the reason, but it didn't get sent to, passed on to the rate payers. So, so the, the total rate for residential is eighteen dollars and twenty-seven cents. And, and when you, when you think about it, they're coming by twice a week to pick up your garbage. We're still doing twice a week. There's also once-a-week recycling. And during those two-day pickups, if you want to put out a dresser drawers, or if you want to put out washing machine or what have you, you can still do that on any day. Many cities, you know, require brushing bulky to be done, you know, once a month or just a few select times during the year. You get to do that on any pickup day. All of that is for eighteen dollars and twenty-seven cents. And another factor that really has to be factored in is when, you know, you're looking, and, and I've ran sanitation in two different cities that was done in-house. And when you get into providing residential service, that's kind of the loss leader. Your profit in your, your, where you make your money is on the commercial and industrial. And we are very heavily percentage-wise residential, unlike Grapevine or South Lake that has a lot of commercial industrial. So, I think it's a fair rate. It's for five years with a five-year renewal, should council desire. But it is pretty much the same level of service. You know, I've probably had two complaints in the nine months I've been here. And I, I, you know, I think it's a reasonable request. And, and, you know, we've worked back and forth for two or three months to get it to where it is, and I feel very comfortable recommending council's approval. And I know Jerry Harwell with Republic is here that can address any questions you may have going forward.
Jerry, would you like to say anything?
In the answer of you, thank goodness for the mask. Can I just stand here for the rest of the time? So, there is one other minor change. Previously, residents were restricted to two recycle bins. Steve beat me up enough that I took that restriction off, and I don't really care. They can have ten recycle bins for all I care. If they want to haul them out there, they can have that many. I am very interested in, in moving forward with the recycle pilot program after this whole COVID thing is over, just to see. Carts has been something that I've been talking to this council about for fourteen years. And I'd just like to know what the residents really and truly think of the carts at some point. It's, there's no time limit on that. We can do it a year, two years. It doesn't make me any difference. Your partnership is very important to Republic Services. Thank you for the Anamias. I eat at the one in Flower Mount about once a week. This is closer to me. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
We appreciate your sales tax dollars.
Absolutely, you do, so. And I, I, and that goes without saying. We do have employees that live in the area that are very active in Trophy Club and what they do. I'll let them go to the exercise place. I'll go to Anamias, so. But we, I do want to mention one thing about this. HHW extending that to four hours. The last two HHW events in Trophy Club were at a cost to Republic of about thirty-two thousand dollars apiece. So, we know that that cost is going to increase. I know this is an increase to your residents, but like Steve said, we drive down your street twice a week, taking stuff that nobody really wants. And at eighteen dollars, I'm going to spend that at Anamias as soon as you guys vote. So, I mean, you know, if you really put it in the perspective that it really needs to be put into. We don't have the roll-off revenue that we had that gave you guys the opportunity to have that lower rate for the last five years. So, this is a very important partnership to me. I live in this area, and so this is kind of one of my favorites. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Counsel, any questions? Pardon? Philip?
Yeah, I had a question.
I knew it.
So, what did, what did you say about recycling? You didn't mind if we put out?
The bins. They're going to have, they're going to be able to use, well, multiple bins. They're not restricted to the two. And I know what you're going to ask me, Philip, so let me just go ahead and throw it out there. I started to go ahead and do it just a minute ago, but the problem with your residents going and purchasing ninety-five gallon carts, I can't empty them. My trucks don't have the tipper on them to empty those because you are a bin city.
What, what about, what about the fifty gallon? So, in other words, if you look on the website under trash and debris, it said that you can use a fifty gallon.
Okay, so just imagine that fifty gallon full of glass.
What, that's what I'm asking.
And my guys can't pick that up. So, and because you can't bag recycling, we can't just pull out a bag. And trust me, we let it get out of hand. I have not been the favorite trash or recycle lady in Trophy Club lately because we're trying to educate your residents. So, there's been a little bit of Facebook talk about why, but I think as, as they've heard what I had to say, they understood it. That was another reason why we lifted the bin restriction, because those bins, they can pick up easily, empty them into the truck.
Okay, that's fair enough.
Jerry, thanks very much.
That pilot program is at no cost to the town of Trophy Club. Unless you decide to implement the program, then we would have to look at what that does overall. There could be an opportunity that if I have another city that has the tippers and I can move those trucks around a little bit, then, you know, we would be able to hold off on, you know, another increase. But it's something we would just have to look at.
All right. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the contract with Republic Services.
Make a motion to approve item number ten.
Do you have a second?
Second.
So, a motion by Councilmember Bone, seconded by Councilmember Girasi. All in favor, show your hands. It is unanimous. Jerry, thank you very much for coming and for the service that you provide. On recycling, I don't know if this qualifies or not, but, but Mindy, there's a lady Mindy in town that called me today and wanted to know if she could put her husband out in the recycle bin, if you would take her.
He has to go to trash. But if she puts him out with the trash. My guys are supposed to do that now. Hopefully, they don't tell us about it. Thank you very much.
Somebody call him out of order.
I'll rule you out of order for ruling me out of order. Okay, I'm sorry, I just couldn't resist that. All right, we are down to item number eleven. Take, take appropriate action regarding joint general special election ordinance twenty-twenty dash oh-one by extending the early voting period beginning October thirteenth through October thirtieth, twenty-twenty, and authorizing contracts with Denton and Tarrant Counties for the administration of the election. That would be ordinance twenty-twenty dash oh-eight. Does someone wish to move that?
Make a motion to approve item number eleven.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, once again, Councilmember Bone and Girasi moved and seconded this item. Any discussion about this item? Hearing none, call for the vote. All those in favor, show your hands. It is unanimous. Item twelve, take appropriate action amending charter election ordinance twenty-twenty dash oh-three by extending the early voting period beginning October thirteenth through October thirtieth, twenty-twenty, and authorizing contracts with Denton and Tarrant Counties for the administration of the election. Do you have someone wishing to move this?
Motion to approve item twelve.
I'll second.
You're just trying to break it up, aren't you?
Move by Bone, seconded by Sanders. All in favor, show your hands. I'm expecting the next one to be coming to me via electronic media. Presentation, item number thirteen, presentation of fiscal year twenty-twenty-one proposed budget for review and scheduling a budget public hearing on August the twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty. Who's going to start?
I'm going to start.
Mike? Oh, okay, Steve? No, we're not doing a public hearing. We're calling, we're saying when the public hearing is going to be.
Yes.
It's just a presentation, right?
Yes.
Yeah, there's no action tonight on this. This is just giving you opportunities to, if there's any questions, it's also scheduling the public hearing for August twenty-fifth. But, you know, I, I think this is a great night for, for, for Trophy Club. And I say that, you know, we had a refunding tonight that saved a half a million dollars. We had two introductions of two new businesses, great businesses, in our new Trophy Club Town Center. We've got a budget that's going to be presented to you that there's no new people. There's no, we're not doing salary increases or compensation issues. There's not a tax rate increase, and we're doing things from a public safety standpoint that I think will set us up on our insurance rating that we should know here in the next thirty to sixty days. So, I think it's, I think it's a, we've got a great story to tell, and this story started back in February. On February one, we had a council goals retreat, and there were some things that came out of that goals retreat. And it was, let's get an ILA with the mud on exchange of, of facilities. Let's look at keeping the tax rate the same. Let's also look at a squad concept, and the mayor, you know this better than anybody. You know, in the past, we haven't had the ability to run two calls simultaneously. And we've got that ability now, and not only that, we are really minimizing the use of the ladder truck. You know, you got over a million-dollar piece of equipment that we're really conserving and extending the life. So, I think we have a great story to tell, and it's a, I think it's a very responsible budget. Again, we're not adding positions. We've repurposed some positions. We've focused a lot of our time and effort on public safety, whether that's police overtime. Hopefully, we can see police officers not leaving as much as they have in the past. We're also looking at additional part-time to achieve a minimum manning of five in the fire department. Most cities do that with full-time. And let me tell you, full-time firefighters aren't cheap, and we're doing that part-time. So, so again, I think it's a very reasonable, very respectable, and very proud to present that budget to you. And I'll let Mike kind of walk you through a little more of the details.
All right.
So, Mike, as you go through this, would you like to go through the whole thing and then entertain questions at the end, or ask questions as you're going through the items?
Counsel's, what would counsel rather do? I'll leave it up to y'all.
All right.
If you'd like for me to go through it all, I'll be glad to, or if you want to stop as we go through and ask questions, I'll be. If you'd like for me to go through it all, I'll be glad to, or if you wanna stop as we go through and ask questions, I'll be glad to do that. And if I don't have a good answer right now for that question, I'd like to take it back to my desk and prepare an answer and get it back out to the counsel.
Thank you.
As we go forward. But, um, if I, mayor and members of council, it's my privilege to present the FY twenty-one proposed budget to the town of Trophy Club. Um, as we looked at this budget, we kind, as we talked about in the letter, we had to look at the changes. We had to acknowledge the changes that we're seeing right now with COVID-nineteen. And that's encouraging us to look at doing things differently than we have done them. But we also looked at the past, and we looked at the budget that Wade led last year and was passed by the council. And that budget has worked throughout this timeframe for the town. And so, we realized we had something that worked, and we tried to stay close to that instead of bringing in something a whole lot different than what we worked from last year. As, uh, some of the highlights has been mentioned is, at the February meeting, you talked about leaving the tax rate the same, and that's what we did. You talked about the squad concept, and we managed to do that by adding fifty thousand in the part-time, twenty-five thousand in fire and twenty-five thousand in EMS to be able to fund that fifth firefighter through part-time salaries. And, uh, and that allows us to run the squad. We also added about thirty thousand in police overtime. Uh, talking with Chief Arada, said that that was a challenge that he had dealt with previously, and so we were able to add funds there. Um, there were no raises this year. No one went two percent more, three percent more, four percent more, anything like that. You may see some changes, and one of them that was brought up earlier in a question was in a town manager office. Part of what we had there is that the assistant town manager previously had been referred to as the Director of Administrative Services. And in that role, he was located in several different budgets, including finance. We brought it all to the town manager office budget. The other people in that, in that salary or hires that the council has made recently with the town manager and with the town secretary, and then the final person is administrative staff for town manager. So, as you looked and you saw a change in that number, that was due to bringing everyone who's in the town manager office into one location and then recognizing two hires from recently. And then finally, there's no full-time employees brought on in this budget. Um, let's talk about property taxes, and if you look at that middle slide, that's what, the middle part of this slide, that's what made it interesting this year. If you remember hearing the discussion of Senate Bill Two at the last legislative session, it was a, it was a change in the way you do the truth in taxation and you calculate your property taxes, and it also changed the calendar. And so, both of those things will be reflected this year, but we stayed with the proposed rate, which we'll ask y'all to set as the not-to-exceed rate so that we can run our, our, our tax rate hearing on September eighth. We'll add the next agenda item. Senate Bill Two, if you remember something called the effective rate, the na- name for that now is the no-new-revenue rate, and that basically is you're bringing in the same amount of revenue based on the property that you did last year. And the no-new-revenue rate, as you can see, is point four-five-three-three-eight-two, which is above the rate we're proposing. The voter approval rate used to be called the rollback rate, and it was an eight percent increase. Now, that's a three and a half percent increase. So, you, so in the future, you can only go up three and a half percent on property tax without automatically triggering an election.
That's the voter approval tax rate?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And that's the point four-six-six-five-nine-nine. And then, the final one, and, and I'm not sure where the thought process of this came from. It's called the de minimis rate, and basically what that does is that gives a town under thirty thousand the ability to raise five hundred thousand dollars in new property tax revenue. Um, but if you go to the de minimis rate, you're still, you're subject then to a petition for a rollback election. And another wonderful piece of this is if we had gone above, uh, the voter approval rate, we would need to be passing it in the next week or two because you have to pass it within seventy-one, at least seventy-one days before the next general election because from now on, anything over the voter approval rate is subject to an automatic election of the voters. So, things have changed and, but saying all that, the fact remains, the rate we're proposing is below any of those rates. Any, the no-new-revenue rate, the voter approval rate, or the de minimis rate. We built this budget with the same rate we had last year, which is below those rates. And then, I got another question on, on this part of the slide, and let me see if I can explain this well. The truth in taxation calculation shows that overall, the town of Trophy Club will get a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars of additional property tax revenue based on the rate we're proposing. But based on just the new construction of about fifty-two million, we're getting two-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand. So, what actually happened is we left about sixty thousand on the table by not going up to the no-new-revenue rate. And, uh, and so, there were two-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand dollars generated due to new construction, and we'll probably see something, I don't know if that much, but we'll see something similar as, um, PD thirty finalizes in, in, on the next, on next year. But after that, we're, we're not gonna probably see as much of the new property revenue hitting the rolls like we have on these two times. But I, I hope that's clear as mud because that's the way it is to me sometimes. But additionally, we're seeing a hundred and sixty-six thousand of additional revenue. If we'd, basically, if we'd been at the no-new-revenue rate, we would have seen two-thirty-two because of new construction.
All right, thank you. Keep going.
All right, um, as, just to touch on general fund revenues real quick. And this is, last year's property tax number approved was about six-point-eight million. We've actually seen, um, we've actually seen about seven million fifty thousand come in this year. And if you take the additional a hundred and sixty thousand, that puts us around seven-point-two. That's why the budgeted number of property tax will be three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand more than last year. Um, truth in taxation and property tax calculation is somewhat, it's a challenge for someone who's done it for a long time, and so, it was just, it just worked out that we'll have that much in additional budgeted revenues on the property tax side. The big drop on the, on it is the license and permits. And if you start thinking about our building permits, where we've run one-fifty to two-hundred thousand a year, we don't have a lot of new construction on the horizon. And so, we brought that down, trying to be pretty conservative with that number. There were, um, s- s- some other changes. Uh, franchise fees went up a little bit, charges for service. EMS, I just took a little more conservative approach on EMS revenues. Uh, the mud's contribution is a little bit more this year than last year. But then we also had to recognize that interest rates have dropped. Um, the people who sat at my desk before me did a very good job a couple of years ago of finding some CDs that were paying a little over two percent and locking in on those. Um, those have gone away, and now, one of the best rates that we're currently earning is a seven, is point seven percent on the earned credit rate with the bank by keeping a certain level of money in the bank. So, um, that's why we had to take the interest rate down. We, they, they, they cut a great deal a few years ago that we can't duplicate right now.
So, just to make sure I'm clear on this.
Yes, sir.
Your slide that says revenues are eleven and a half billion.
What, yes, sir.
We're actually going to have, uh, property tax of seven-point-two billion.
Yes, sir.
Right, of that eleven.
Yes, sir.
So, what, between seven-two to eleven-five, the difference is other things other than property tax?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Of which, the largest piece would be sales tax that we basically have left flat. Um, we're trending close to ten percent above where we budgeted. But in this economy, uh, we just felt it was best to leave the sales tax number flat as we go forward. Okay, on the increase in expenditures, as we mentioned earlier, uh, fire and police, additional part-time for fire and overtime for police. The other personnel cost, which included the FY twenty hires, which included the staff we talked about earlier, also included bumping up the beginning police officers a little bit last year. Um, certification pay and then retirement, social security, workers' comp. Um, our health insurance did not change. Our rates we paid did not change for either the town or for our employees.
Wow.
So, the, one of the nice things is, is we're, we're, our employees are not receiving a raise this year, but nor are we hitting them with an increase in health insurance. And so, that, that worked out pretty well. Um.
Can I ask a question here?
Yes, sir.
Um, when you say additional overtime for police, I, I thought that a year ago we budgeted in CCPD additional overtime to take care of PD thirty and the new HG supply. Is that still in CCPD without?
Let me grab my budget.
Okay. So, we're, so we're at, so we have that in CCPD and in this budget? Do we?
Yes.
Is that, is this overtime different than?
Every year, for the last three years, we've averaged about eighty-five to ninety thousand dollars in overtime. But John, it's limited us to just the fifty-five and then sixty. So, this is, if we're gonna keep the budget flat, I asked that we, we fix that, we right-size that number.
So, you're just basically kind of splitting that, that eighty-five to ninety, and you're budgeting for it? So, you're saying that you went over previous?
Every year, yep.
Okay.
So, and they just fixed that for us.
So, so if we turn to page forty-four in the budget, which is the CCPD fund. Overtime, it was approved in twenty-twenty, was twenty thousand dollars, but we're estimating we only spent twenty-four hundred dollars of it?
So far, with the record, I think we sent about, you know, it'll most probably be about five thousand. We haven't had, the officers have actually started to do the country club instead of do that patrol, so.
And so, you're basically keeping that budget the same?
Mm-hmm.
So, while you're looking at that page, I had a question about that for the twenty-twenty-one proposed budget. Under capital outlay, there's a hundred and fifty thousand there.
Yes, sir.
Previous year was forty-seven.
Mm-hmm.
So, I had a question about that, if y'all can answer that.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
What's the question?
Well, the question is, what's the increase that went from?
Oh, okay.
From forty-seven thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand capital outlay?
Yes, sir. That's for vehicles. So, last year, we bought one vehicle. Next year, we're gonna buy three. We're gonna replace the new, the ACO truck and then two police cars.
I knew that. That was a, that was one of those questions I asked to get it said publicly.
Oh, okay. Thank you, sir.
Hey, can I have a question real quick?
Yes, Carl.
And it's, it's more a point, but chief, uh, one of the reasons you're down on overtime is because you've been able to use the SROs. So, you've had, you haven't had to send them to school, so you've had more man-hours available.
Yes, and they backfilled for the officers that weren't able to come to work.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to point that out. That's one of the reasons why that overtime's down.
Thank you, chief. All right, go ahead, Mike. Thank you.
Let me ask one of the questions.
Go ahead, Phillip.
So, if we're hitting eighty-five to ninety thousand in overtime every year, what's the solution to that problem?
Well, with training and other stuff that we do, that's just, it just, we hit more officers.
Well, a big, a big part of that too is, uh, you know, and we dressed it in this fiscal year, this current fiscal year of getting police officer pay up. But when you're running in a small department like this, two and three, and sometimes four vacancies, all we're doing is backfilling to keep, I mean, we're not gonna have one officer out on the street by themselves. So, you're bringing people in on overtime. So, if we can, if we can get that to settle and, and keep a consistent number of officers, that will help that overtime tremendously.
And I, 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 I mentioned this to, when I met with Steve and Mike, um, there was an interesting thing. Obviously, there's a ton of, of bad things that cities are doing, you know, in defunding and other things. But there was an interesting thing that Denton County, uh, Denton, City of Denton is doing, uh, probably for a different reason than I have in mind, but, uh, they actually are hiring, uh, people without a badge, without a gun, that will go to a, uh, situation that is just a report. So, in other words, they get a call, it doesn't require an officer, it, it's, you know, now, I would have it more in mind for somebody who's retired, who is bored in Trophy Club, which we have probably a ton of those type people, uh, that, uh, certainly maybe can relieve some of that, you know, situations and perhaps keep officers out on the street, but they actually, you know, will use somebody like that to, uh, just go and take a report at dog lost or whatever, the, the thing. And just something to keep in mind. I don't know if it works in our situation, but I thought it was an intriguing thing that, that Denton, City of Denton is doing, obviously, again, for a much different reason than probably what I have in mind, I'm sure. But, uh, but, uh, anyway, I thought it was a good idea.
No, it is. That's a great idea. Thank you, sir.
I'm sorry, I interrupted you several times there.
No, 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 no.
Thanks, Patrick.
The next two that led to increases were contractuals and information services. Saw some increases, and also, we moved Jill out of HR and into her own department and communications and marketing. And we brought some additional funding to that. And for both of, for these last two, they're both looking at what we experienced this year and what does the future look like? Are there different ways we need to learn to communicate with our citizens? Are there different ways we need to learn to do things? And so, this, this funding is there to help those areas. And don't blame the department heads. I was probably a little generous in both of these line items as we were building the budget. So, we would leave some room to identify new ways to do things. And so, if you feel like, if you feel uneasy about them, I'm the one who, who came with the final number, not the department heads, so.
On, on the thirty-two and the fifty?
Yes, sir.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I, um, and I, and the thought was there's probably things that we don't know how to do well right now, but hopefully, a year from now, we do know how to do well, and then we're able to fund those things. There may be things we just don't know to do yet as throughout this whole COVID process, people have seen the, how they've had to learn to do things differently, and that was kind of my thought in these areas.
Yeah, I may need more, uh, clarification on that.
Yes, sir. No, sir. I'd be, I'd be glad. I'd be glad to. But I, I just wanted to let you know. So, all right. Um, as we look at capital projects. And one of the questions that was asked.
Can I interrupt you one more?
Yes, sir.
Apologies, uh, I'm, I'm looking at the spreadsheet, the all-fund summary fiscal year twenty-twenty-one. It's right after the calendar entry in the packet?
Yes, sir.
And on the right side, uh, the communications number doesn't carry over to the total on the right. I just wanna make sure that the seventeen, like, six forty-six does include that total and it didn't actually accidentally get left out.
No, sir, that's, that's my fault.
Budget page four.
Yes, sir. That's my fault. And I'll fix that. Thank you for letting me know. Uh, and again, as y'all see anything on this budget document, our ultimate goal is to end up with an approved budget that's a good spending plan for the town for the next year. And so if y'all see anything that looks wrong or looks different, just let me know and I will be glad to fix it.
Parks, you were on capital projects.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And, uh, on the capital projects, um, at the June twenty-third, um, the manager talked about beginning to move some of our excess general fund fund balance over to capital projects. We talked about moving about five hundred thousand to the capital projects fund or fifty percent. Capital equipment replacement moved twenty-five percent, or two hundred and fifty thousand this year. And then information services equipment do about the same amount. And so that's where the funding for this came from, along with fund balances that were available. Um, one, the, on the capital projects, the two big ones are the Meadowbrook Drive and the Trophy Lake Drive. Those will equal about one-three of the total one-four, four-seven. And then the other amount of money would go toward just panel replacements, onsite, different panel replacements. And what we're looking to do in the capital projects fund, because we're moving five hundred thousand and we're leaving that in the fund balance, is we're trying to get all of the seventeen bond funds spent. Um, we've been in discussions with Mark that we would come back at this time next year for another debt issuance. But before we issue more debt, we wanna get rid of existing debt that we have currently available to spend. Um, capital equipment replacement would be things such as fire and EMS equipment. Um, we're looking at a new pickup truck for the fire department. Parks is looking at a new pickup, couple of mowers, a mule, and then a lot of pool maintenance are some of the things that they're looking at. And, uh, if you need more detail on that, be glad to sit down with you and show you what the departments have provided to us, or I can send it out in an email, either one. And then on information services equipment, we budgeted a hundred and twenty-five thousand. And once again, um, you know, we know we have certain five-year replacements, but also some of that may be for those things that we don't know at this moment. And, and, and I would not have done something like that if we were not staying at the current tax rate, which is below the no new revenue rate. If we were having to increase the property tax at any level, I would not have put money in that way in the, in the budget. So. Um, just to run through some of the other funds real quick, the debt service fund, there's a Senate Bill Two does something else for you. You know how you try to build a little bit of fund balance in your debt service? Well, if you have excess collections, they make you put that into your truth and taxation calculation. So when you look at the revenue and the transfer in, it doesn't get to the debt service amount. And that's because basically with Senate Bill Two, we're having to spend about three hundred and fifty thousand of our fund balance of debt service this year. Um, Mark and I have looked at that, I've talked to the county about that both. And that's, that's where we are this year in debt service.
And that's required by law.
Yes, yes. That was a wonder, um, one of the discussions I had was that in Senate Bill Two, when, when you have debt, your ratings houses like to see about one-year debt service. Well, our legislators have decided they don't wanna see one-year debt service. And they're going to try to work us to spending down our fund balance in our debt service fund. And that's what you're seeing the effect of this year. Um, hotel occupancy tax, we cut the revenue in half, given the fact we don't expect as many people to stay. And on the expenditures, there's a hundred and seventy-five thousand in capital there. We got a question about today. And, uh, the last discussion we had on monument signs, the dollar amount was close to that. Now, there may be new dollar amounts, but that's been put in there as a placeholder, uh, depending on what council's direction is on that. And, uh, and then on street maintenance, uh, we have our normal expenditures. There's about a hundred thousand for street repairs on that one also.
Now, is that, so is that different? Are you adding, um, money in that street maintenance for panel replacement? Is that in addition to what?
That would be, so it'd be ultimately about two hundred and fifty thousand for panel replacements. The hundred and forty-seven that's in capital projects and then the hundred that's in the street repair, the street maintenance. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Uh, Parkland dedication, our hope is that, uh, PD thirty, the multifamily, will get a CO this year, which will lead to another payment of a hundred and fifty thousand from that agreement. Um, Parkland dedication, we have a hundred thousand in capital. At, at the twenty-third, we talked about potentially pickleball courts. There's also been discussion about playground equipment. Playground equipment bid came in a little above that. But once again, that would be based on council direction. And if we needed to amend the budget up or amend the budget down, depending on the decision, we could do that with the agenda item at that time and just keep it clean. Trophy Club Park, you'll see a little bit of a negative fund balance right now in Trophy Club Park. Um, they're currently, uh, doing work, they're supposed to be reimbursed by grant. We've not seen the grant dollars yet, and there's discussion of a future grant. And, and in the past, um, that people have recognized grants sometimes before they occur. I just feel like it's safer for us to recognize a grant when we receive it and when we start doing the expenditures. I always get just a little bit nervous, okay, in expenditures, before we know that we have sufficient revenues in place for that. Um, once again, with situations like this in the future, this next year, uh, since the plan is with council's approval to approve the budget at the next meeting, which would be in ordinance, then we could begin the process to where we, when we have changes in these kinda capital items, that we would also just do a ordinance change along with the letting of the contract. So that way, we keep things clean. And then finally, storm drainage, um, we budgeted an extra hundred thousand for, uh, just independent labor to work on our drainage ditches. I, I will say that I had a citizen call me today and I think their wonder was if there was something a little bit more than a hundred thousand in the storm drainage utility. And, uh.
And let me just touch on that real quick. That, you, you know, from that citizen's perspective, we agree that there needs to be something far greater than that, but we don't know what that far greater amount is. This hundred thousand is to develop a systematic drainage maintenance program where we're going through there every three, four months and doing actual repair work, pulling tree branches out, pulling mud out, silt, you name it. We haven't done that in the past. It's been kind of when we have time or when, when we can get around to it. So this will be, we'll, we'll be developing a program around that hundred thousand to do purely maintenance.
Okay, and just real quick to, to go back, as, as, the Fourth of July, it's also in the hot tax funds. Just to make sure we get that. Uh, final two are the EDC, that two, two eighty-four, most of that, two oh three is a debt payment based on, I think it's a fifteen, series fifteen sales tax debt. And then the TERS fund, um, that's what we're estimating revenues and expenditures. Basically, I think it's thirty-five percent of the property tax and sales tax that comes in, we reimburse back as part of the agreement. Um, this is just kind of a illustration of the next steps that we're looking at. If it, if the council's okay, we'd like to set a budget hearing for the next meeting, the twenty-fifth. That would be the public hearing where our citizens could attend. Um, our next agenda item, I would, if the council is willing to set the not-to-exceed rate at point four four six, four four two, then we would come back and have a budget hearing and the approval of the budget on the twenty-fifth. Then have a tax rate hearing and approve the tax rate on September eighth. Um, state law also says that you have to pass a budget before you can levy taxes. And so that's why, you can do it at the same meeting, but, um, and this calendar reflects the new Senate Bill Two. One thing to consider, uh, it's not a recommendation I'd make, is our tax, our, the proposed tax rate is low enough that we actually do not have to have a tax hearing, a tax rate hearing. But when I've been in this situation before, I'd go ahead and recommend having a tax rate hearing just for transparency purposes, and it also gives your citizens a chance to speak. So.
Thank you, Mike. So a couple of things on this item thirteen. Um, by having this presentation tonight and mentioning the fact that, uh, we're looking to do a public hearing on August the twenty-fifth of twenty twenty for the budget, it's an announcement of that. We don't have to do anything tonight to approve that public hearing. But the plan is to advertise it and to have it on the twenty-fifth unless someone is thinking that we shouldn't do that. But, so if anybody wants to comment on that, you can. Um, anybody?
So you're saying we just need to move forward tonight with proposing the public hearing for August twenty-fifth?
We have announced it by this action, so it will happen unless you change that. We're not voting on whether or not to do it, but just letting you know that's the plan.
I would say, if we were approving the budget potentially on the twenty-fifth, why not go ahead and have the next item be our tax rate?
On, on the twenty-fifth? Um, yeah, they, the town attorney and I talked about it because if you're sitting in my chair, that's the best thing in the world, is to approve both. But they're separate dates. The budget hearing and tax rate hearing would need to be separate dates.
They have to be separate dates?
Yes, yeah, we, when we researched it now, if we chose not to have a tax rate hearing.
No, I think we need to.
Yeah.
So, so also on that, just, uh, because we haven't been practicing this thing that council started some years ago, um, council established a budget finance committee or subcommittee. And its purpose was to be able to get three members of council together with staff to help through the budgetary process and provide some ga, guidance. And we haven't really been able to do that, uh, in, in, in this cycle. Now, if you look back at that, that was an outgrowth of the fact that the charter actually called for us to do something. It was named a different in the charter. And so I wanted to at least bring that forward tonight. Our, our budget finance committee is short one person, uh, based on what's happened over the last six, eight months. And so if we're gonna continue that, uh, it, it might be nice to have that group come together, answer, ask any questions that we might have about what you've done, let you have some time to ask us questions prior to that next, uh, budget hearing. So i- i- if that's what council wishes to happen, if we can kinda organize that. But if you want that to happen, currently, myself and Schoffner serve on that committee, but we could have one other person serve on that committee based on how it was formed.
And that would be a posted meeting? Cause you would have three as quorum right now.
Oh, yes, sir. That's right. Well, didn't think about that, okay? Well, you can continue with the two if you want to, but, uh, it called for three, didn't it?
Yes, sir.
So it's, it's, it, it's considered a quorum even though four is required to pass anything?
Four is required under the charter to pass, but open meetings is state law, which has a majority of the body.
So even though we couldn't even have a meeting with three?
Well, but the Open Meetings Act requires it to be open, even if things are just discussed, it doesn't require a vote.
Just another reason why a charter should be changed.
So, we, we could appoint a third person, and if we did do a third person, then we need to post it, uh, with an agenda. So that, and the seventy-two hours would apply.
Yes, sir.
So it's, it's, uh, basically just bringing that up at this point for discussion to say, uh, what should we be doing to better follow what was in our charter and what we'd agreed upon doing and maybe help through the process? So what's council's wishes, if you wanna comment on that, uh, request to speak? Anybody? Phillip, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I think it's good to have, um, the budget committee, but I also think that the, the days where, um, are the, over the last couple of weeks, uh, Steve and Mike, I think, have brought in council, three-on-three or two, I guess not three-on-three, two-on-two, and, uh, and brought them in. That's, I think that that's probably, I know that my time in there was beneficial. Uh, but I mean, certainly, the budget subcommittee should, should fulfill what the charter says and, and meet. But, but even if other council members, I think that in years past, the council hasn't been fully, uh, aware of budget items, you know, uh, coming into a meeting, um, or couldn't ask the questions such as the, uh, subcommittee could. And so with, with so few of us, I think that that's not impossible to bring, you know, to have those if, and I, and they even offered, uh, Mike even offered to set up the TV and go over any questions, things like that. So I encourage anybody that wants to go in, cause I, I, after getting the line out, I'm, I'll have a ton of questions. So, uh, so anyway, I, you know, I encourage it, but it certainly is, is beneficial, it's always been beneficial, I think, to have the budget, uh, subcommittee. And, uh, and I know it's a new thing, you know, for, for staff, maybe you didn't quite know or thought it was the audit. I think that, that you probably thought it was the audit committee. But, uh, that's certainly something that the, the charter requires, and we talked about that.
Yes, now. So as a comment, the meeting that Steve, we had in the EOC about the budget, didn't we have three council members there?
No. We originally, I guess it was the three of us. And then they, being, us being, for everybody's knowledge, is Carl, Nick, and myself was for one. And then because of this concern about potentially having a quorum, we broke it up into the, the two. Is that what you're asking? So it was two, two, and two?
Yeah.
And the, the, the second two, for everybody's knowledge that's watching online, would be our incoming unopposed council member.
Two, two, and one.
Two, two, and one, yeah, that, it's one.
So I thought that was Michael and Carl and I were in that meeting, okay?
That was, that was originally scheduled, but we.
Touch your button if you wanna talk.
I've heard about the finance subcommittee being in the charter, but I haven't been able to find.
No, no, the charter subcommittee is set up because there is a charter requirement for fiduciary oversight uh, of the budget. And so originally, it was a ways, it started out as a Ways and Means Committee, and then it went to a citizens advisory. And then we, I think, eventually got a legal opinion from maybe Patricia before you that we could do that as a council subcommittee.
There is an actual ordinance that lays out the budget.
And it, and it fulfills the fiduci, the fiduciary oversight that is required in the charter.
But it doesn't say two or three people of council, it says council shall provide ordinance by orders the procedures of administration and fiduciary oversight of the budget.
Use your microphone.
Section nine point oh seven of the charter reads, "The council shall provide by ordinance the procedures of administration and fiduciary oversight of the budget." It says council, not part of council, or two or three council members, like, I don't understand the point of it.
Again, that's what councils in the past did. So obviously, any council can change it to, to decide how that fiduciary oversight is. We, as a council, several years ago, created a finance subcommittee. I think that David would probably agree that it could be changed, whatever, as long as there's fiduciary oversight.
I, personally, I like coming in, you know, with another council member.
Personally, I like coming in, you know, with another council member and, and, you know, we did that a few weeks ago. I like, I like that. I think it should be more inclusive of all of us personally.
You could do all of us. You're just going to have to agenda.
No, I'm not saying at the same time.
Oh, okay. I thought you meant at the same time.
No, what, what you're recommending, I hit this button here. So you're talking about what we did for the overview of the budget, where you had several of us come in, interview it just with staff and ask questions and, and provide that oversight. So in lieu of the subcommittee, all members of council had an opportunity to review the detailed budget.
No.
No?
No, disagree with you on that, but okay.
That was just the overview.
All that was, was a meeting where Steve told us his philosophy. There was no detail handed out to us whatsoever.
But this one going forward would be the detailed, where everybody would have an opportunity to go over the details. Instead of it just being a subcommittee, that would go over the detailed, um, budget, and then we would vote on it later. It would be, if I understood Sean correctly, he's saying we all get the opportunity to go over the detailed, uh, budget. Is that correct? Is that what I'm hearing, Sean?
And, and again, you know, that's what we're bringing this forward tonight in, in this manner, that we still have two weeks before we're going to ask you to vote on it. So if there's any questions or any resident asking questions and you want to come in and talk to me or Mike or whoever, we'll make it available. You know, whether it's one of you or two of you or, or all of you individually. I mean, it's.
Alright, so let's try to move this forward. Counsel, what do you want to do?
Mayor, as you said earlier, we're not voting on this item, but you're looking for direction if you want it to.
That is correct. We're not voting.
I mean, I, I'm, I'm with Sean that I liked us all having the opportunity to go through and having those discussions and entail a detailed dialogue, uh, individually. We, we, you set the meeting up, we had the opportunity to come or, or not. And so, and I think everybody made, made it to those meetings. And I'd like, I think that'd be nice for us to have that detailed discussion again.
Yeah, then why wouldn't you just do that out in the open then? Why would you, if you're not going to have a subcommittee that meets for council, why wouldn't you just do that kind of stuff out in the open or even in a, in a workshop setting?
I'm fine with that too. Yeah.
I think it, that would be, if, if all of council is going to do that, I think that that's much better than, you know.
I like the idea of having a workshop prior on our next meeting, on the night we're going to vote. That way we've got an opportunity to ask questions. And you may be asking something that I had thought of and vice versa. I think that would, I like that idea better than a subcommittee.
I would rather us get together before voting like that. Having the meeting thirty minutes before you're going to vote isn't practical, in my opinion. So that's just me. So if you're going to do it, do it to have time that you can ask questions and staff can react to that, as opposed to having to walk in here and having something that you're trying to debate or talk about that hadn't been researched. Alright, so, um, Steve, if you would just follow through and try to see what the majority wants to do.
Okay.
And if they want to have one meeting, let's try to make it happen. If not, we can do separate.
And then we'll, we'll have a budget public hearing on the twenty-fifth. Yes.
So, so I have a few, just a few things. Um, is there any way on the, on the line item that we received? It, it pretty much is cleaned up, but there are some things in there that don't make sense. And, and I don't know if somebody can, or, you know. Well, I mean, like, so if you look at the very first page, manager's office, under, um, incentive programs, it still has meet you anywhere beginning two thousand seventeen, where there hasn't been any activity. I don't, I don't assume that we're under any kind of incentive anymore with meet you anywhere.
That's correct.
And so just things like that, if, I don't, and I, it may have been that it just was in there and because nobody, because there's no activity in it, somebody just didn't.
Yes.
Erase it.
Yes.
And so, and if I find anything, I'll let you know, uh, as well. And then the other thing that, um, you know, and I just barely was able to start looking at this, you know, when you sent that. Um, but if you go to, I think it's, uh, police uniforms, uh, no, I'm sorry, it's EMS uniforms. Is there any way to carve out, uh, what we give, uh, or what we provide to volunteers? So in other words, uh, if you, if you look in, in that, it says TCEVA volunteer shirts and winter coats. Um, I don't know if we can, can kind of carve that out and into a separate line item that lets us know. Cause I think sometimes, um, in the past, we've, we've tried to get TCEV, TCEVA to request items, Nick, I think. Uh, you know, of things that they need. And it doesn't seem, you know, like they, it doesn't seem like really anybody ever kind. Originally way back, uh, Jeanette Tiffany had started a skunk works where she wanted people to come ask the council for, you know, things that obviously help citizens and think, and nobody did it. And then, and then we tried to get volunteer groups to come in, you know, and, and. So anyway, this is the first time I've actually seen TCEVA, uh, in a budget. And so I don't know if we can carve those sort of things out just to see, just to, to show what, um, what the town is providing for volunteers, which I think is, is, uh, certainly something we should do because, uh, without volunteers, obviously, we would be paying for those things. So I'm all for that. I just would like to see it.
Okay.
The, the, the final thing, or, or one other thing that concerns me or, or I'm, I'm hesitant, uh, is when you say no raises, no FTEs. Um, is, and I'm sure that that's not from, from staff, from departments not asking. Maybe that was a directive that was sent to the departments. Uh, but my fear is next year, are we going to be even further behind the eight ball when it, eh, eh, when it comes to having, I mean, for years, we've heard, let's do a true-up. Let's look at, do a salary study, things of that nature. And so my fear is we do nothing this year, then, you know, next year is going to hit us like a ton of bricks because you're going to say we're even further behind. And so.
We may have to, we, we may have to do that next year. Uh, was it a directive for me? Yes, it was. Uh, but if there was a department head that had a serious issue, they would have come forward and said, "Look, I understand, but man, I'm getting killed here." And my whole feeling and philosophy was you've got cities and towns out there that are furloughing, that are laying people off, and my whole goal was to keep us whole.
Yeah.
And so, but, but we'll have to look at that next year. Will the, will there, is there potentially an impact? I'm sure there is, but I don't think many cities are having much movement in pay and benefits this year.
But, and I don't disagree with you, but what I, I guess what I'm saying is because we're not facing that, that huge hit that a lot of cities are, you know, which is, which we're very fortunate, is that should we carve out in this budget, and, and I just want you to look at it. Should we carve out in this budget, um, something to, eh, eh, something to not, eh, not put us in a position next year of being really hit hard, I guess is what I'm, you know. Just look at it and bring it back to us if you think that that's going to be a concern. If not, then, you know.
Fair question. I can do that.
Um, that's all I have for now, for now.
Okay. Mike, really appreciate it in the presentation, and you answered all of my questions that I had sent you. So I checked them off as you went through them. So thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Um, we will move on to item fourteen, take appropriate action regarding setting the fiscal year.
Hey, can I say one other thing? I'm sorry, Nick.
Sure. I didn't finish reading it. It's not on the floor.
I told this to, uh, Steve and Mike, um, and I just want to make it public. If you go back and look at the budget in two thousand thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and look at, what I look at, you know, as a council member is, is obviously there's a letter in that budget that is directed towards council. If you look at those years that I mentioned, the letter is almost exactly word for word. Without fail, it's a copy and paste. And so as a council member, I always thought, well, this is odd. You know, that they don't take the time to actually write me a letter that says what they're doing. There'll be a few number changes here and things of that nature, but it always starts out the same. Uh, then I think that I made the comment in a budget meeting, a, a subcommittee meeting to, uh, Tom. I said, because the same letter came to us, and I said, uh, well, that's odd that you didn't take the time to write a letter. You know, you copied and pasted. I, I don't think he liked that very much because the next year, there was a, a letter that was, or maybe even in that budget year, he took that, that prior letter that was in the, uh, pre-budget out and put a new letter. And, and no offense to Wade, but your letter was exactly the same as Tom's. This was actually the first year, and I don't know who wrote it. I don't, eh, this was the first year that, if you look in our budget, since I've been on council in two thousand thirteen, that the, the letter is actually written to council based on what we did in January or February during our retreat. And it lays out the things that we discussed. And I, I think if you go back at the retreat, uh, we wanted the fire, uh, the, the EMS. We thought that there should be two. It was a great idea that, uh, interim chief Cochran had at the time. And, you know, and I think you even made the comment, "Well, we'll look at it. Don't know if we need it." But you listened to us. And so it's in the budget. And all of the different things that we, you know, there were two or three things that we really highlighted in that meeting. You'll find that in that letter that they, and that's the first time since I've been on council that that actually has happened. And I just want to say that I appreciate it, you know. Um, it, it just shows that you, you know, somebody, somewhere, staff, whoever, uh, listened to council, listened to what we said at a retreat and actually implemented it. So I appreciate it.
Yeah, I think it was a good letter. Thank you. It, it was a summary of what to look for.
Yeah.
Thank you. Alright, item fourteen, take appropriate action regarding setting the fiscal year twenty twenty-one proposed tax rate not to exceed the current rate of zero point four four six four four two per one hundred dollar valuation and scheduling the tax rate public hearing for September the eighth, twenty twenty. Uh, I would move that we set the not to exceed tax rate of zero point four four six four four two per one hundred dollar ad valorem tax rate. Do you have a second?
Second.
Well, second. I'll second.
You tried. Schaffner was the first one I heard. Alright, any discussion about that? Alright, all those in favor, show your hands. It is unanimous. It is set. Uh, counsel, we don't have anything else on the agenda. It is eight forty-three PM, and we are adjourned.